Test, test, test. One, two, one, two. Anything? Test, test, one, two. Test, test, test. Should be at about the two-minute mark. One, two. Test, test. Hey, one, two. Hey, what's up, Ann? Whoop, that works. I heard it. Alright. Can everybody please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Is that that? Jeez. Excuse me. Why is it so loud? Is this okay? Okay, welcome to the August 17th School Board meeting. Our first order of business will be the approval of minutes of the July 13th meeting. Moved by Ann, second by Adrian. All in favor? Aye. So moved. Next on the agenda is consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions? Would you like anything removed?
I would just like to say Jill Russo is retiring. I would like to do that with regret, please.
Okay. So would you add regret to Jill Russo's retirement?
And I would also like to say that what an amazing person Jill has been for our district for all these years. I remember when Mike was going to school, finding any kind of problems on the sports field, any kind of scheduling problems, I'd call her immediately. She'd get back to me and have the answer. She's just such a wonderful person and she will really make a difference.
I agree. Anybody else?
Am I not on?
I just, I'm sorry. I just want to add that we did, I know it's come up in discussion about our building-level emergency response plans. They look great, so just job well done. Thank you for that.
Yeah, can I have a question about the, last year we talked about how the Bosie's law had to try out. And so we said at the time, we really need to look at what services we're getting from them. If the prices are so high, then maybe we need to start looking at them. In that light, I brought up again the science kits and whether we can do that in-house. And the other thing is that, you know, it says that we're charging them
I don't know, sold.
Eight dollars and five cents per square foot for using our schools. And that's up from seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. So my question is, what are the other districts charging for their Bosies using their school? And how does it compare, since that is so nominal a raise?
It's a good question. For, in general, for these smaller two or three classrooms, that's the standard rate across the, across the county. In some instances, say, South Orange Town's entire elementary school or middle school, I believe it is, I don't know, I think they get a little more than that because I think that lease is about three hundred thousand a year that Bosies pays South Orange Town. So, we only have three classrooms this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Can I have a motion to move the consent agenda? Moved by Christine, second by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Next up is certified personnel. We always have a lot of appointments.
Resolve that Filomena Gama, speech teacher in the Nanyouette School District, be granted an extended leave of absence without pay effective 9/13/21 to 6/24/22.
Can I have a motion? Moved by Ann, second by Sue. All in favor? Aye. So passed.
Resolve that the resignation of Carrie Fitzgibbon, art teacher in the Nanyouette School District, be accepted effective 7/15/21.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Adrian, second by Stephanie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Resolve that the resignation of Deborah Munoz-Herdis, foreign language teacher in the Nanyouette School District, be accepted effective 7/17/21.
Can I have a motion? Moved by Christine, second by Sue. All in favor? Aye. So moved.
Resolve that the resignation of Anastasia Crichton, teaching assistant in the Nanyouette School District, be accepted effective 8/16/21.
Can I have a motion? Moved by Ann.
Second by Lynn. Lynn.
Sorry Lynn, I forgot you're down there. Lynn's virtual tonight. Second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Resolve that Michelle O'Sullivan be appointed to the position Assistant Principal in the Nanyouette School District for probationary appointment effective 9/17/21 to 9/17/25.
Can I have a motion? Moved by Sue, second by Christine. All in favor? Aye. So moved.
Michelle could not be here in attendance, but she is watching virtually, so.
Congratulations.
Resolve that Joseph Agavino be appointed to the position 1.0 School Psychologist in the Nanyouette School District for probationary appointment in the tenure area of School Psychology effective 9/121 to 9/124.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move it. Adrian?
Moved by Adrian, second by Ann. Opposed? Favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Joseph, are you here? I did not see him come in. Okay. Resolve that Jeanette Millian be appointed to the position 1.0 Foreign Language Teacher in the Nanyouette School District for probationary appointment in the tenure area of Foreign Language effective 9/121 to 9/125.
Can I have a motion? Moved by Christine. Second by Lynn. Opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Jeanette, are you here? Oh, there she is. Congratulations. Resolve that Nicole Kisek be appointed to the position 1.0 Elementary Teacher in the Nanyouette School District for probationary appointment in the tenure area of Elementary effective 9/121 to 9/124.
Can I have a motion? Moved by Ann, second by Stephanie. Opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Nicole is here. Resolve that Erin Murphy be appointed to the position 1.0 Art Teacher in the Nanyouette School District for probationary appointment in the tenure area of Visual Arts effective 9/121 to 9/125.
Can I have a motion? Moved by Sue, second by Christine. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Erin, are you? Did I see Erin? No. Okay. Resolve that Shayna Meehan be appointed to the position .6 Social Studies Teacher in the Nanyouette School District effective 9/9/21.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Adrian, second by Stephanie. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Shayna, are you here? There she is. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Resolve that Jordan Schofield be appointed to the position Teaching Assistant in the Nanyouette School District for probationary appointment in the Teaching Assistant tenure area effective 9/125, 9/121 to 9/125.
Can I have a motion to approve? Moved by Christine, second by Sue. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved.
I do not think Jordan is here. Oh, you are there. I didn't see you in the back. There she is, all the way to the back. Congratulations. Resolve that Tatiana Pollard be appointed to the position Teaching Assistant in the Nanyouette School District for probationary appointment in the Teaching Assistant tenure area effective 9/121 to 9/125.
Can I have a motion to approve? Moved by Ann, second by Sue. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Tatiana could not attend tonight, so she's also watching virtually.
Congratulations.
Resolve that Marie Martucci be appointed to the positions .6 Teaching Assistant and .4 Math Teacher in the Nanyouette School District effective 9/9/21.
Can I have a motion to approve? Moved by Christine, second by Stephanie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Marie is not here, but she's also watching virtually.
Congratulations.
Resolve that Shannon Glenn be appointed to the positions .8 Teaching Assistant and .2 Home and Careers Teacher in the Nanyouette School District effective 9/9/21.
Can I have a motion to approve? Moved by Lynn. Second by Ann. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved.
And I do not believe Shannon is here. Didn't see her. Also watching virtually.
Congratulations, Shannon.
Resolve that the following individuals be approved as substitute teachers and teaching assistants effective 8/18/21. Stefania Giglio, Katherine Massana, Natasha Skatoff, Chloe Channon, Maureen Darty, Kristen Chiarella, Kimberly Chiarella, Shayna Meehan, Danielle Mangini, Nicole Kisek, Alyssa Kaufman, Nicole Myrna, Dana Mosin, Mark Barrett, and Stephanie Zograthakis. Sorry if I mispronounced that.
Can I have a motion to approve? Moved by Sue. Second by Christine. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is establishment of tax rates.
Resolve that the Nanyouette Board of Education pursuant to Chapter 500 of the Real Property Tax Law adopts a district-wide homestead, non-homestead tax levy for the 2021-22 school year.
Moved by Ann, second by Adrian. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried. Next is the approval of establishment of tax rates for the 21-22 school year.
Whereas a budget resulting in a tax levy of fifty-seven million, nine hundred, ten thousand, six hundred, thirty dollars was proposed by the Nanyouette Union Free School District for the period July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022 pursuant to the education law and duly approved by the voters at a meeting held May 18th, 2021 and whereas a budget resulting in a tax levy of three million, one hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars was proposed by the Nanyouette Library for the period, for the same period pursuant to the education law and duly approved by the voters at a meeting held May 18th, 2021, therefore be it resolved that the tax rates per one thousand dollars assessed value for the period July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022 effective August 17th, 2021 be hereby set as follows. Without reading them to the penny, the district's tax rate is going up. It's going down in Clarkstown and just going up by point zero five percent in, in Orange Town. So, this was a good year.
Can I have a motion? Moved by Ann, second by Adrian. All.
I think this is probably the best tax rate I've seen in many, many years. Usually the differences between Clarkstown and Orange Town are great. So it's really nice to see that they're pretty even this year, so that taxpayers on both sides of town will be taxed about the same. So it was really, really good. So, thank you, Maria.
You're welcome.
Do we, do we vote? It was moved by Ann, second by Adrian. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried. Next on the agenda is the authorization of release of funds.
Whereas the state permits school districts to establish certain reserves for accrued employee benefits and whereas the district established an employee benefit accrued liability reserve, EBLAR, in June of 2018 and whereas two employees entitled to benefits covered under the EBLAR retired in June of 2021, now therefore be it resolved that the treasurer is hereby authorized to appropriate eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and ten thousand and eighty-three cents the amount from the EBLAR fund for payment.
Can I have a motion to approve? Moved by Christine, second by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Next we have the approval of KSQ work authorization proposal.
Be it resolved upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, the Nanyouette Board of Education authorizes the following. One, the attached contract with KSQ is hereby approved and two, the superintendent or the assistant superintendent is hereby authorized to sign it.
Can I have a motion to approve? Moved by Sue. Second by Stephanie. Sorry, sorry Lynn. I know the feeling. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried. Next up is the approval of risk assessment update.
Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Nanyouette Board of Education accepts the the Nanyouette Union Free School District Risk Assessment update for 2021 as presented by our internal auditors, Acume Partners.
Can I have a motion to approve? Moved by Lynn, second by Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Next we have the authorization of budget transfer.
Be it resolved that the Nanyouette Board of Education approves the attach, authorization for budget transfer dated August 17th, 2021 in the amount of one hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the general fund.
Can I have a motion to approve? Moved by Sue, second by Lynn. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried. Next up is the approval of an overnight trip for the cross-country team.
Okay. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Nanyouette Board of Education approves the overnight athletic field trip to Shenanigans Valley State Park in Shenanigans Forks, New York for a boys' cross-country team on Friday, September 17th, 2021 through Saturday, September 18th, 2021 to compete in the McDaniel Baxter Cross Country Invitational held at Shenanigans Valley State Park.
Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Sue. Second by Adrian. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried. Next up is the superintendent's report. Can I?
Thank you, Mr. Digman. Okay, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Congratulations to all of our new members of our Nanyouette family. My superintendent report's gonna be a little different today. Normally I speak about all the exciting things that are going on in each of our five schools and at our district level. But since this is our summer board meeting and we know that all of our schools in the region, in the state, in the nation are all eagerly awaiting details about how schools are going to open in specific communities, I think it's a good time to share Nanyouette's decision on our reopening plan. So I'm going to read. I apologize, I'm usually not a scripted person. But there's a lot of detail in here. I will follow the superintendent's report up with a formal K-12 email message to the entire community tomorrow, as I've done in the past and throughout this entire pandemic journey with updates. So I will do that tomorrow. For anybody who is not listening, for those who are listening, you can always go back to the moment of, of the YouTube video and listen further. But I'd like to be really consistent with, with what I'm sharing. So I'm going to read. So I apologize for that in advance. As we near the opening of the 2021-22 academic year, the district's number-one priority is to have students in school every day while keeping them and all staff members healthy and safe. We are hopeful that the continuation of our successful safety protocols will allow us to maximize in-person teaching and learning while minimizing the disruptions families experienced last year. In the absence of updated guidance from the New York State Department of Health as of today, our reopening plan of today, our reopening plan rests on the August 12th, last week's guidance from our Educational Commissioner, Betty Rosa, and the New York State Department of Education. Nanuette Union Free School District's reopening protocols and expectations are as follows: All students are expected to attend school five days a week, full day, according to our typical school schedule for in-person instruction. We here in Nanuette agree with the American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, Commissioner Rosa, and the New York State Education Department that students need to be in school full-time. According to the Commissioner's memo, New York State Department of Education's position on remote instruction is that schools must be prepared to provide remote instruction in case of closure due to a public health emergency, not unlike the one that we all experienced on March 13th, 2020. Nanuette will be prepared for that, but we hope that we will not be back in that journey again. However, schools open for full-time in-person instruction will not be required to provide a fully remote model of instruction. Therefore, since the Nanuette Union Free School District is going to be open full-time, the district will not be offering a hybrid or fully remote option. Activities, community school events, extracurriculars, and athletics for all ages are all scheduled to proceed in a typical fashion with health and safety mitigation in place. We will continue to employ health, safety mitigation strategies that support in-person instruction, such as, and you've seen videos on this that we've put out to the community, we've updated any shifts and changes that we've made as guidance was updated throughout this journey, this pandemic journey. Some examples are increased cleaning protocols, improved classroom filtration, access to PPE, classroom air purification systems, and specific quarantining protocols. Again, we have a video on our website of what we utilized last year upon our return, so that we will just continue those health and safety procedures that have bode very well for us throughout the past 18 months. Our next bullet: We understand that mask-wearing is highly debated on a national scale, and many have strong personal feelings about its efficacy in mitigating or reducing the spread of COVID-19. Our decision regarding the topic of masks rests predominantly on one particular aspect of the recent New York State Department of Education's guidance as it relates to quarantining. And I will read that exact area that we're most focused on for our school community. The CDC guidance document defines a close contact as someone who is within six feet of an infected person, and therefore must quarantine all students within a six-foot radius in the classroom. For us and our experience last year, that's seven to eight students per one positive case in our student body, on average. The new update from just last week, in the classroom setting, the close-contact definition now excludes students from quarantining mandates who are three to six feet from a positive-infected student if both the infected student and the exposed student or students, deskmates, within three feet correctly and consistently wore well-fitting masks the entire time. Throughout this pandemic, we have heard so many of you share the disruptions quarantining has imposed on your children and your families. Not only did it interrupt the learning process, but it led to increased student isolation, depression, loss of access to clubs, sports, activities, and social connections. We also heard from the community throughout last year that quarantining procedures created massive hardships around childcare, often notification the night before for families who have children that are now required to stay home for 10 days, and job stability for the families we serve. Our primary motivation is to keep our schools open and not send large amounts of children home to quarantine for 10 days throughout the school year. I'm gonna repeat that again. Our primary motivation is to keep our schools open and not send large amounts of children home to quarantine for 10 days throughout. We want...
You'll have a chance.
We want our children to fully and consistently participate in all the wonderful things Nanuette Schools has to offer.
You'll have a chance. You'll have a chance.
We have the utmost confidence.
Come in, please.
We have the utmost confidence in the health and safety measures put in place over the past year, and now want to eliminate or reduce potential quarantining as much as possible. This new allowance in last week's updated guidance now offers us, in New York, the opportunity, as long as we all wear masks. Therefore, all members of the Nanuette Union Free School District community will wear facial coverings, masks, regardless of vaccination status, while inside district facilities and on district transportation. This is the same approach as last spring.
Please, just give us... Please, stop. One second, please. You'll have a chance in public forum.
This is the same approach as last spring for indoors, and we will continue to allow masking outdoors to be optional. Guidance and requirements for schools have evolved constantly over the course of this pandemic, and we expect this to continue for the months ahead. We are extremely thankful to our proud school community of Nanuette. You have all been patient, flexible, and supportive as we work to comply with the ever-changing local, state, and federal requirements. Of course, we will continue to provide you with any and all updates if things change from now until opening day. As we have done during this pandemic in the past, specific questions related to each of our five individual schools will be addressed by our principals and our building-level reopening teams. We are so eager to welcome all of our students back. We have a group of students that spent last year on virtual. We are so excited for all of them to return to our schools as we open up full-time again on Friday, September 10th. So I know there's a lot here. It is streamed. Hopefully, you're able to hear the entire message, but if not, I will reiterate the salient points in a K-12 message that I will send out to the entire community tomorrow, so everybody can read the information in the quiet of their own home. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Hold on. Hold on, one second. You'll have a chance at the microphone. Okay. One second, one second. Ma'am, ma'am, please, please, please. All right, next order of business is public forum. Okay? So let me read my statement, and then you will have your chance, okay? Okay, all right, okay. Public forum. If you don't stop, we're not gonna get through this public forum. Okay, public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for the public to make statements to the Board of Education. Statements are not made to other members of the public. Okay.
So we don't quarantine them.
Ma'am, can I continue, please? The Board does not routinely comment on personnel. All right, this isn't... Come on, let's stop the arguing. Just not gonna help. Tina, please. Okay. Don't engage. Please don't engage.
Three minutes.
I'm gonna give you an opportunity, all right? To get to the microphone. All right, then you don't want one, that's fine. The next person can go. Let me continue my public statement, please. "It is the Board's strong recommendation that any criticisms or compliments concerning personnel be made in writing and not presented at the open forum. Comments made in writing allow the Board to review the comments in detail and to ask the superintendent to review the comments and take action if necessary. In order to provide an opportunity for all public speakers to be heard, each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Does anybody like to speak?" Yes, ma'am.
So if you are an adult living in fear of children who don't cover their faces, it sounds like you need psychiatric help. It's not a child's job to suffocate themselves to make you feel safe. If you are that scared, then you stay home and you keep your mask on, because our children should have that option, and you take it away from them, because you know that you can control them. And that's wrong on every level. It's my child, my choice. If your mask works, then you're safe, then you leave the rest of us alone, okay? You wanna start with segregation, with the unmasked, and the masked, and the unvaccinated, the vaccinated, then give us an unmasked classroom, the way you give allergy-free classrooms and peanut-free classrooms. How do you like that one? Was that up for debate? No. You make decisions based on unions, and that's wrong on every level, okay? Our tax dollars pay for kids' education, and we deserve a seat. And whether or not we want them to wear a cloth covering on their mouth for seven hours for your union bosses, okay? You get what I'm coming from, so I hope you keep this public, because this is exactly what it's about. It's time for school boards to stand up and give children and parents their rights back and to do what's right for our children, because you're wrong. You're wrong, and you know you're wrong. I don't know how you sleep at night, it's a disgrace. The CDC has recommended guidelines, their recommendations. You don't have to follow them. Your unions tell you to follow them. You can keep checking your time. Don't worry, I'll stop at three minutes. You don't have to check your time, okay? It's child abuse, and you know it, okay? If no party will teach you the lesson, then go get your vaccine and wear your mask, but leave us alone. It's freedom. It's freedom of the free. If you're afraid, then stay in your house. And one more thing to say, like we finally said, I don't want statistics here. I'm so pissed right now. Would you muzzle your dog for seven hours? Would you muzzle your dog for seven hours? That's my last question. Would you put a muzzle on your dog for seven hours? Why are you muzzling our children? You can eat in a restaurant without a mask on when you sit down, and masks should not be on our children, okay? Answer me that. When you go sit in a restaurant, do you take your mask off to eat? When you sit at a restaurant, do you take your mask off? I'm asking you. Right there, I'm asking you. Do you take your mask off?
Yes, of course I do, yes.
Then why can't our kids take it off? Why? Why? No, at the table, before you even serve your food, when you sit down, your mask comes off. We deserve a choice as parents. You're taking that choice away because you're afraid of the unions. You're afraid of the school unions and the teachers' unions. Shame on you. You are bored and pink, or like every single one of them, including Randy, who will be protesting at home office and here all year long. You will hear my points hogging, you will see my signs. I will not stop till these masks are off our children. And that's all I have to say, because I'll be here all year. I'm not going anywhere.
Hey, I appreciate... I'm sorry, I didn't get your name?
My name is Tina Floyd-Beldier.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else would like to speak? Could you please just state your name before?
I think most of what you're talking about tonight is consistent with a lot of what colleges are doing, so you know.
Is the microphone on?
I'm sorry, can you speak up?
I was saying, what you're talking about doing today is just indoor masking, right? Did you say outdoor is sort of optional?
Still optional.
Right? I think this is very inconsistent with what the upstate colleges in New York are doing, so I don't have an issue with it. And I think you also said something about you'll revisit, right? Like, right now, you don't have firm guidelines, because we're in between governors, right? And you're going by the CDC stuff. But they didn't say they're gonna have this indoor masking for the entire year. Your goal is not to have hybrid, or whatever you called it last year, right?
Virtual, yes.
A and B, right? I mean, to me, I think this is a positive thing, believe me. I am a Trump supporter and not a masking person, but I feel like this is a good halfway house, and that's all I wanna say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Laura Perici, and I have a junior and an eighth grader. They're both wrestlers, and I hope we have a normal wrestling season this year. This is my first school board meeting. I've never felt the need to come, because I thought you have done a wonderful job. We've had a very positive experience here in Nanuette, so thank you for all that you've done for our children and for us. I have a question and a comment, but about the first speaker, I have to say, it would have been nice if a survey had gone out to the parents to ask, just to know. Like, I would prefer my children not to be masked, but I have no way of knowing. Am I in the minority? Am I in the majority? So, you know, you have access to these surveys. We got surveys last year. It would be very interesting, I think, just to send a survey out and see. Do most parents want their kids masked? Fine, I won't fight if it's most, but if most of us don't want it, maybe that's something to consider. But the reason I came tonight, a comment, unfortunately, a negative one. I don't know if our landscaping budget has been slashed, but the grounds do not look good. Right underneath this window, they planted some beautiful plants. They are being choked out by weeds. The middle school, I don't know if you've seen the sign for the middle school, not the electric one, the regular sign, completely covered with weeds. I don't know when this happened. And the mowing has left a lot to be desired. So that's just a comment. My question, though, and I apologize, this is my first meeting, if you've already covered this. If you've seen the news, you know critical race theory is a hot topic. Is that being integrated into the Nanuette school system this year?
Would you like to answer that, Kevin?
No, the critical race theory has not been adopted by Nanuette Schools.
Anybody else like to speak? Thank you.
My name is Marie Condalucci. I did send out an email earlier this week. First of all, I want to thank you for opening the school five days a week and no hybrid. Disaster for my children. I am in somewhat of a unique position, because both of my children are gonna be in the high school, and I think everybody here knows every student in the high school is age-eligible for a vaccine. Dr. McHale, I did listen to your comment about the reasoning behind the masks and the definition of close contact. In addition to people who have been wearing masks and are three to six feet apart, vaccinated children do not have to quarantine. So I just... I apologize to the people who have younger children, but my concern is because my children are going to be going into the high school, and they are vaccinated, and I realize that's, you know, personal health information, but they would not be subject to the quarantining measures. So I think that should somehow come into consideration for extracurriculars. And Dr. McHale, am I to understand all academic clubs will be in person this year?
Correct.
In the high school? Okay, that was a concern for me last year. And the plastic barriers that are up now? Gone.
They're removed, yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for answering my questions, but I do wanna... Obviously, you guys are aware of the CDC guidance, and vaccinated people do not have to quarantine.
Correct.
Quite honestly, I don't understand why that exception does not apply to teachers. I don't absolutely arbitrate. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Patricia Bass. My son is a student at, I don't know what you call it nowadays, the School of Excellence or bar, whichever. I have come here tonight respectfully as a parent to discuss... I have come here tonight respectfully, as a parent, to discuss the upcoming school year. After last year, and the four months previous, I would appreciate my voice, and everybody else's voice heard here, whether their opinions are for or against. My son came back to school in April 2021. My son was bullied... I know we don't like to hear that word, but I'm gonna say it. He was bullied on a daily basis by other students, whether he was wearing his mask correctly, or if he was, in fact, six feet away from them. My son was segregated to a table by himself, when he ate breakfast here every day, as he had to take his mask off to eat. I will say that again. My son was moved from the table he was sitting at with his classmates to an empty table, because he had to take his mask off to eat. None of this should have been done to my son or other children. My son also had daily anxiety attacks, headaches, dizziness, and chest pains. At least weekly, he had canker sores, sore throats, and cystic acne. But most of all, he still suffers from a compromised immune system because of the masks. His learning was severely impacted due to all of the above, and he also could not hear his teachers and their lessons daily, because they have to wear masks. There are several things we are given at birth in this amazing country of America, and rights are one of them. We were given the right to oxygen from God, or your Creator, or Yahweh, or whatever you choose to call them. No man or woman has the right, legal or otherwise, to deny anyone oxygen. Education is also a right we receive in America. My son has not received a full education last year, or the four months in the prior year. Another right we have, parents have the right to discuss good choices versus bad choices with our children. This is something Nanuet schools have also discussed with our children. Constantly reminding them in if they are making a good choice or a bad choice. If parents or their children feel wearing a mask is a bad choice for them, they deserve the right to make that decision. It is my son's right to choose. His body, his choice. The federal and state government, nor the school district, have a say in my body, my choice, for any student. And no one has a right to deprive him of oxygen. New York State currently follows CDC guidance regarding masks for in-school students. I would like to note the word guidance. The definition of the word guidance from the Cambridge Dictionary is as follows. Help or advice about how to do something, or about how to deal with problems. So it is exactly that, guidance. Guidance given to the parents and their children, who happen to be students here. We have been told to follow the science. The science cannot produce a single lab slide with the COVID-19 virus or cells on it. I will say that again. The science cannot produce a single lab slide with the COVID-19 virus cells on it. Therefore, any discussion regarding wearing masks are moot. But the science also does state that masks do not stop the spread of COVID-19, and neither does social distancing. I implore you all to stick to what you know, which is educating our children in math, science, social studies, and ELA. Please do not continue to cause my child, and all the children in the Nanuet district, permanent physical, emotional, and educational damage. Please leave the child's body and health decisions to the parents and the child. Please stop making decisions for our children, whether they are politically motivated or not. I only say that because every time I go on social media for this school, I see another picture, another photo op, with another politician in any of these schools. It makes me question the ethics that we are following. I don't think politicians belong in a school. I don't believe that they belong on social media. And I think it's very unethical to do so. As a taxpayer, I feel that everybody in this room, whether they're for masks or against them, have the right to make that decision on their own. Everything is guidance that comes from formerly known Cuomo, who's no longer our governor, from the CDC, from the DOH, from the NIH. I can stand here all night and give you three-letter people. It's all guidance. Guidance is not a law. Mandates are not a law. You cannot enforce them. And as a taxpayer, my son has the right to an education like everybody else in this room, and in this town of ours. You've taken away the ability to be home, which I actually do agree with, because I was home with him, and it was torture. But... He should also have the right to make the decision. It's his body, it's his choice. It's not yours. It's not the government's. It's up to the child and the parent. I appreciate you listening to me, thank you very much. But my son is not going to be wearing a mask, so I'm not sure what we're gonna do about that. I guess what?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Where, where will he go if he refuses to wear a mask? He's 11 years old, and he can make that decision on his own, his body, his choice. Could somebody please give me an answer? What happens?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
If my son refuses to wear a mask, what happens?
Thank you for your comments. If you listened, all students that want to return to Nanuet schools for full-time experience must wear masks regardless of your vaccination, vaccination status.
But that's the guidance.
That's our reopening plans, approved by the board, recommended by the superintendent. There's no debate, there's no conversations here. We're presenting the opening requirements to be a member.
You're presenting something that you all agreed on, that you all spoke about behind closed doors. You didn't ask for a survey like this young lady asked.
Thank you.
Stop blowing me off, McHale, I don't appreciate it. I didn't vote for you, and I'm sure you have Dominion voting systems in here, because I know a lot of people that didn't vote for you either. You're not listening to me. What happens, my, I'm a taxpayer?
I appreciate your comment, thank you, thank you very much.
My son deserves the right to come here for an education. If he himself chooses not to put on that mask, what are you going to do?
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. Don't dismiss her, answer the question. If my son refuses, are you gonna put him back on the bus? Are you gonna put him back on parents? What are you gonna do?
This is not the forum to discuss individual conversations. Thank you. There will be conversations, there will be conversa... If these are your questions, as I mentioned in my statement, if these are your specific questions about your children and the schools that they attend, there will be conversations at our building level, reentry teams with our principals. That was in my statement. These questions are about individual students in individual schools. Those conversations will be had at the building level. This is not the forum at a board meeting. This is not the forum to have a Q and A about eight or nine different families that want an answer when there's other people here attending from the public that are following the agenda. The public forum has rules and regulations for open forum, as per Roberts Rules of Law. That's what we're following right now. Q and A back and forth is not part of the open public forum procedure. Sir? At the building level. If that's your question, it will be answered at the building level with our district, and our principals, and our building-level teams. But what I can say is, at this stage, on the 17th, our reopening plan requires masks for all students. The reasoning is so that if there is a positive case for any of the students that aren't wearing masks... This, we're not contesting medical data, we're, we're not making comments on N95s, we're not saying this is what we all wanna do. No one is saying that. That's why our statement for reopening is purely about our ability to eliminate, or at least reduce to the most possible, the amount of children that get caught in the mandated quarantine algorithm, which is six feet around an unmasked student automatically requires the district to quarantine all those students around an unmasked student. That's what we don't want to do to all of our children. So I appreciate, and I understand, my child, my, my choice, my, my voice. I understand that, I understand it. But when you're in a complex organization, like a school, where they're in classrooms next to peers, when they're in hallways next to peers, we do our best, and we've been working our tails off to try and keep the kids safe, and at the same time, work within the rules and regulations of this schooling in a pandemic. We try and keep the kids three feet apart. And now, if we do that, by welcoming back every student in the community, we have to space out our classrooms three feet. And if, let me finish, if children all wear masks, there will not be involuntary quarantines. Remember, all the families that send their children with masks, all the families that send their children in with masks have no say if they're sitting next to a student without a mask, and that student, unfortunately, and we hope it doesn't happen, but if that student is positive, regardless of the severity of the virus, if it's just a cough, and it doesn't send them anyplace terrible, which is what we hope, but if they are positive for COVID, we automatically have to quarantine all the other children who are wearing masks for 10 days. And that's what we've been living in for the last year. And it's all the things that I brought up in the presentation. The parents who don't have childcare, who are told 4, 5, 6, 7 o'clock at night by our contact tracing teams, our principals that called the families and said, "I'm so sorry, I gotta let you know, Johnny was caught in a quarantine. We had a positive case in Mr. McHale's class, and Johnny sits near the person, and unfortunately Johnny's gotta be home for 10 days." Parents scrambling to find childcare, scrambling to contact their employers, to ask if they can have some sort of accommodations. We heard it all through last year. So this year's guidance, although we understand the debate about masks, we're valuing the ability, as a school board, as a superintendent, as a district leadership team, as, as a Nanuet Teachers Association, we're valuing to have kids in our classrooms, live with us, day after day, with the most reduced amount of chance that we're vulnerable to losing kids in 10-day clips due to a six-foot quarantine. That's the essence of our mask mandate right now. That's the essence of it. And it's not, it doesn't go beyond that, to studies of infection, or quality of, of N95, K95, versus cotton. We're not in that space, I agree with you. Do what you do best, educate the kids. I agree, Mrs. Bass, that is what we do best. And Lord knows, I can't wait until that's all we do again, and we don't live in this world. We don't have the choice about quarantining. The, I understand we have a choice about masks, I understand that. We don't have a choice about quarantining mandates.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
If I go by your logic right now, can you turn this back on for a quick second? Because they turned it off. Hello? If I go by your logic, which I have stood here and listened to respectfully, I have one question for you.
Sure.
If every, by your logic, if every single child in the schools go by your rules and wear a mask, then nobody should be quarantined? We'll have no quarantines? Because your logic states, if you're wearing a mask, and you are six feet apart, nobody will get sick, and there'll be no quarantine?
The only places...
I wanna let you know, you said it, it's on.
No, 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 Mrs. Bass.
But let me finish, please. I gave you the respect, give me the respect.
No, but...
I'm gonna hold you to that.
I said limit, limit or mitigate.
It's on there. You can't go back.
Mrs. Bass.
You said it.
That's fine, that's fine, in classrooms, yes, that's what I've been discussing, classrooms. We do have universal busing. We have universal busing. These are the type of conversations that we would have at, at a more detailed level.
You didn't give us that opportunity, but okay.
Of course, on our buses, we've discussed this, mask or no mask, the way we were in the spring. We have fully masked buses, we try to load the children from the back, we, we use seating charts as best we can with something complex like busing. But opening school next year, full-time, full-fledged, is going to bring back all 2,300 kids. We're not going to discontinue universal busing. There are families that have decided last year, and may decide again next year, to drive their kiddos, and we understand that with no judgment. We've created systems of even starting morning start times later, so that we can have different phases of parents dropping kids off before the bus. However, we don't have the ability to measure, like we do with desks, perfectly three feet on buses. So buses is an area that we may be vulnerable to quarantines. Regardless, regardless of mask-wearing. The other place that we're nervous about is the cafeterias. And we're right now really busy this week, now that we're looking at the guidance that just came out on Thursday of last week. We're trying to figure out how we could spread out the footprint of every school.
But you don't have to.
So that all of our kiddos that are returning, this will be the first time in a year and a half that every student... Last year, we had a percentage, 18%, that were all on virtual the entire year.
But you're not giving the virtual to, to the parents this year, you're not giving us that.
Right, yes, so all of the kids... All of the kids are coming back to school, which means we're gonna have crowded schools again. We are trying to spread out our cafeterias, because we know the kiddos take off their masks to eat. The rule from the CDC, these aren't my rules, these are...
Not a rule, guideline.
These are, yes, they're guidance from the CDC.
A guideline is not a rule, it's not a law.
And this is an allowance from Commissioner Betty Rosa, who's allowing schools who use universal masking to take advantage of the opportunity that I explained. If all the kids are wearing masks, and yes, one of our kiddos contracts COVID-19, but he or she's wearing a mask, and they're three feet from all of their peers in a classroom, yes, we can essentially eliminate sending six to eight children home on a quarantine.
So you're doing it to save money.
The infected child does have to always go home and quarantine and get tested.
So you're doing this to save money? You don't have to have a teacher have an online class?
We're doing this so that we can have children in classrooms every day without closing. We're doing this for all the reasons that I mentioned. We don't like sending children home... The night before, parents have to go to work.
You didn't give us any decision in this, you didn't hear our voices on this, sir, respectfully, you have not. I am the taxpayer, I pay the salaries for this school, I pay for this beautiful building. And you did not give us any ability to be heard about this. You sent no survey, you asked no questions, you all sat here and decided behind closed doors, the little bulletins that you were gonna read... doors, the little bulletins that you were gonna read, and guess what, just like last year?
We--
That's it, you have no choice.
We made a decision here in Nanuet.
You made the decision.
We made a decision, let me finish.
We did make the decision.
We made a decision in Nanuet--
Let me finish, please, sir, and then I will let you speak.
To try and keep the children in the classrooms--
But they're not in the classroom.
As consistent as possible without quarantining to the best of our ability. That is our goal for the opening of the school year.
I will tell you--
All right.
All right, this is the last comment and that's it.
Last comment, you got it, sir, I appreciate that, that's fair enough.
Thank you.
I will tell you now, and I will put it on record, and I hope it's on Zoom for everybody to hear, Rosa Parks was segregated back in the days because she was African-American, right? She was not allowed to ride on the bus in the same area that other people wore because of the color of her skin. My son this year was segregated to a table by himself because he took his mask off to eat breakfast. My son was bullied. History's repeating themselves by the little Hitler youths that were running around this school telling him that his mask was not on correctly or he was not six feet away. He's 11, he doesn't know what six feet is, he doesn't know it.
Thank you, yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it, thank you. All right, we went a little past the three-minute mark on that one. I appreciate it, we'd like to hear your comments. If we could just keep it a little bit more, thank you. Your name, please, thank you.
Claire Longtown, I am the mother of a fourth grader at Highview, an incoming pre-K student, and one more student who'll begin pre-K the following year. Regardless of what side of the argument everyone is on, everyone in this room can agree, masks suck. You agree, I agree, they suck. But no one likes them, no one enjoys wearing them, but aside from, you know, picking the one that matches my outfit in the morning, there is nothing fun about them either. And we understand that, we all want them gone. However, this is not the time to do it. Dr. McHale, Board of Education, with the exception of Stephanie and Adrian, who I know are in the medical field, the administrators, the teachers, you did not go into these professions to make medical decisions. You are following guidance that was put out by state ed. And hopefully, state health department will come out with guidance, they should have, and they pass the buck. We get it. The loudest voices in the room should not be who influences the decision whether or not masks are on students in the fall. The decision should be made based on information from the professionals, whose job it is to make health-related decisions even if we don't like it. Right now, when you read the SED guidance document, and I have, the guidance on quarantines has been loosened. Quite honestly, I have my own concerns about these changes, but nevertheless, if children are masked and one child tests positive, the children sitting next to the positive child will not be quarantined if they are masked. You stole my thunder, you said exactly the same thing, Dr. McHale. That is one significant reason alone to have these masks in September. Teachers and students in classrooms may be immunocompromised or have other health risks which could lead to leave of absence for staff or forcing students to go remote because it is not safe for them to be in the classroom if we are not fully masked. I understand there is a debate, my mask protects you, your mask protects me, wear your mask, but people are on both sides. I spoke to my own pediatrician and he said, everyone in the room, everyone wears a mask. I trust him with all of our other medical decisions, I have to trust him. If there has been any consistent message from everyone the last 18 months, we need students in school. In school is where they learn best. Remote teaching is not the way to teach. Students and teachers are all thrilled to see Zoom learning over with. We all want it gone. Masks will allow children to be in school and do it as safely as we are able to based on current information. In addition, through August 12th, 2021, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics website, which is updated weekly, 378 children have died from COVID in the United States. The Delta variant is more infectious than the strain we were seeing in early 2020. The week ending August 5th, 94,000 children were infected with COVID. By the following week, that number was up to 121,000 children. 20 children have died from COVID in the past two weeks. Not one person in this room wants any of those statistics to include children from Nanuet. So I'll go back to my original statement, masks suck. But I want Tarte McHale and the Board of Education to know you have my family's full support for putting a mask mandate in place for September. You all have a thankless job, trust me, I know. You'll never make everyone happy, but the least we can do is try to keep everyone safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody, I'm Angela Gall. I have a son who is a rising first grader at George Miller. And I just wanna, I wanna ask, I can tell I'm not gonna be preaching to the choir here and I can see the masks that aren't on and not on properly, and I would just like everyone to try and hear me, and this is what I want to say. Jose Lejos, Kim Hope, Mike Cartwright, Jim Bear, these are the names that I will never forget because these are the names of the kids who died. I think everybody who went through high school and came of age has a memory of the first person that they knew of their age that died. Those four names of kids from my high school who died due to suicide, illness, freak skiing accident, and distracted driving crash. Almost everyone I know lost at least one classmate when they were in high school. There was at least one person who had a bouquet of roses and a framed picture on a seat at graduation instead of being there themselves. There was a memorial section of the yearbook devoted to at least one kid in my four years. And I don't want my first grader to have the indelible impression of a peer who died. I don't want my first grader to be the one who dies. And with the Delta variant, we're looking at statistically losing the same number of public school students nationwide who died at Sandy Hook Elementary School every single day. And if we don't take at least some precautions, and I support the precautions that you have put forward in keeping with the mask policy, my children are both named in memory of their Uncle Brian. He was a 15-year-old who died of a virus in 1998. His parents and pediatrician thought it was the flu. It was pericarditis, which is a virus that attacks the membrane around the heart. And the only way to diagnose it is to do an EKG. And who does an EKG on otherwise healthy 15-year-old with symptoms of the flu? But Brian Jackal, that's the name his friends remember and schoolmates remember. He was a 15-year-old who spiked a fever and he never went back to school. I think about the Nanuet kids that I coached in Little League, I think about the kids from the Lake Nanuet pool, I think about the kids my son knows from day camp and Hebrew school, and I think about his classmates whose names I only know from a tiny little box on the Zoom screen. And I don't want them to ever be the names that we never forget because they died. I know that we'll never come to consensus on this, and I know that, you know, there are some minds I'm never gonna change. And I know that there are people here who will be radically opposed when I say a mask for every child until a vaccine for every child, and that's okay because it has to be. This is still my community. But listen, I would throw my body between danger and any one of the Nanuet school children, any child. If I run the parking lot at Stop &amp; Shop and I saw a car dart in traffic, you had better believe I would fling myself World Cup soccer goalie style to push that child out of the way of that moving car. I would do that to save a young life. And so even though I'm fully vaccinated, I'll wear a mask if it has the potential to save one life. And I'll do my best to teach my child to wear one properly too. And Brian, and Mike, and Kim, and Jose, and Jim are a huge part of the reason why. We already have a Little League field, we already have a Little League tournament in memory of a Nanuet student who got hit by a train. No more memorial tournaments, it's not worth it. Even one child is one too many. Please mask up.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Andrea Hauser. Dr. McHale, I'm glad that you're taking a stand and stating how everything should be. Okay, whether or not we agree or whether or not we don't, this is what you're requiring for us. Last year, I ran the fourth grade funding at the OEC outdoors. 166 kids, masks were required, masks were mandatory, not one kid complained. They had the best damn time at the OEC for those couple of hours because it was the first thing that they got to do. They didn't care about masks, they had fun, they played games, they were with their friends. The parents are the ones who are feeding the kids, okay? Yeah, that's right. The parents are the ones who are feeding the kids who--
Please, please. Enough, no, please. All right.
Shut up.
All right, all right, we're gonna stop. Please, thank you.
Dr. McHale, so finishing. 166--
All right. Stop. Please. Okay.
Okay.
Andrea, thank you. Continue.
Andrea--
Stop!
This is, this is-- You wanna come up here and talk? Okay, then come up here and talk. Okay, anyway--
Give her a chance to say her piece, thank you.
166 kids had the best time with masks. Okay, the parents are the ones who, yes, are feeding into this. My wife's cousin started down in Florida school, high school, three hours later got the call, positive test. The next day, three positive tests. School just started, masks are not required down there. So yes, I do, and there are a lot of parents who are for masks, for the safety or for at-home other people who have underlying conditions that I don't want to get sick. Okay? I am, I am.
Thank you. Can I, before you start, just please, everybody remember that we do have many students, kids watching this online, you know, just, I want you to keep that in mind. Thank you. Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Lynn Mean. I'm a parent of a junior, incoming junior and eighth grader. I didn't plan to talk about masks, I always had more of a question on athletics. But I do want to say that I appreciate the continued hard work of the board. I don't love teaching in my mask, I'm also a teacher, it's awful. But what's worse than teaching in a mask is teaching hybrid and having remote students. So I appreciate that you, as well as my own district, are implementing the masks to get all the students in. And I also understand that, that you can't please everybody. So my comments, though, have to do with more about equal access to athletics. As per Section 1's most recent recommendation to cancel high-risk sports in areas of high community transmission unless all participants are fully vaccinated, which Rockland County does fall into that red zone. I request that if it is still left in your hands as a board, I know you said you were gonna continue to discuss things and as of right now, all activities are open to students, but if it continues to be left in your hands, and I request that you allow all student athletes to participate regardless of their vaccination status. If unvaccinated students are allowed to sit on an enclosed school bus, if the school allows unvaccinated students to sit in the classroom, then I don't see any reason why you would make a decision to not allow them to play an outdoor sport. So that's just my, something to put on your radar about sports, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
My name is Barbara Greis, I live in Nanuet, and I came here this evening because I am so very deeply concerned about what is happening in so many of our schools. And earlier you said that you're not teaching critical race theory here. Well, that's, I hope that certainly is true because, you know, I've lived here for over 30 years and I always pay my taxes on time and just because I don't have kids in the school district doesn't mean I don't care about what's going on in the schools, I care very deeply. And my question is, first of all, you say no critical race theory, it goes by other names, they call it diversity, equity, and inclusion, it's the same thing. I don't know if you have that here, but I was in attendance at the Clarkstown meeting just this past Thursday, and they definitely have it over there. And that is a very sad thing because critical race theory is Marxist propaganda falsely posing as something academic. I, I, so, I mean, I hope you're not doing it under a different name. And with regard to the mask issue, oh my goodness, I just would hope that-- I'm sorry, I've never done this before and I'm a little nervous.
That's fine.
But my, I, 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 I was, I wish you could have heard what happened at the meeting last Thursday. There was a little girl there who has been back and forth to the hospital many times because of complications from her mask. And I mean, this is serious. Unfortunately, there are some kids who can't wear masks. Her parents are pulling her out of the schools there and putting her in a private school next year, they won't have it, they will not deal with it. And I don't blame them. And I'm sure there are, you know, there are some kids, yeah, maybe those kids from your situation the other lady described here tonight, you know, they had a great time and they wore their masks and for some kids, it's not a real problem, I'll tell you. In my own job, I wear a mask every day because my employer requires it. And it messes up my sinuses and it affects, you know, sometimes I get the headaches and the things, but, you know, there are, the masks do cause problems. They're not, it's not just a simple, oh yeah, no problem. It can, and for some people, it can be a very serious problem. And is there any way to have an allowance for kids who do have a serious problem with their masks? I, I, I mean, we heard a nurse speak last Thursday explaining, well, she can explain it better than I can, but the point is, it's, if, that this one size fits all, everybody has to, you know, for some kids, it doesn't work. And there has to be some kind of allowance or provision for that. I thank you for listening to me and I want to stay involved and keep finding out what else is going on. I've never come to a school board meeting here before and I'll tell you, you're a little more orderly than Clarkstown was. I think we could all use a little comic relief, couldn't we? I mean, we're all, we're all human. Uh, so, uh, thank you for listening to me and, um, I think I'll be back.
Thank you so much.
I actually have a follow-up question, just based on what she said. Um, and I really appreciate, by the way, hybrid schooling was awful, having to change on a dime was awful. The teachers were heroic. The music teacher is literally teaching to kids in front of her and then she's in a spinning chair and she would spin and teach the kids on the screen. It was heroic. Um, and it's not ideal. Is there a way that families who don't wanna comply, children that are not comfortable with masks, can they be schooled from home? Can parents make those choices? And the families that do wanna be in compliance with the policies, can we send our children for the benefits of five days a week in school?
We, we do not have a virtual option at this point. Sorry?
Do as I say. Give us no choice.
We're at your mercy, the taxpayers.
Good evening.
Hey, uh, Jonathan Carroll. Um, uh, I was here last year, sort of in the beginning of the shutdowns. Shockingly, I was the only parent to speak. Uh, Dr. McKay, who did call me offline after we had a lengthy conversation about it. Uh, I, as much as I, I've been irate for the last eighteen months and I'm kinda tired of being irate, so I'm gonna try to be a little more relaxed here with this stuff. Uh, I'm obviously not in favor of the masks for our children. I'm definitely not in favor for me, but, and everyone should be able to make their own choice. Uh, but without a doubt, I am not in favor for the children. Uh, um, they're profound, and I'm not a doctor, but I have dropped my interest in sports, in everything that has been going on since this whole thing started, and have kind of focused all of my attention to, you know, watching doctors on TV, you know, them talk about it on both sides. Um, unfortunately, on every other channel, you only hear one side. Then there's another channel where you hear the other side. And they're all Yale, you know, Johns Hopkins educated doctors. These are not flukes that are, you know, fluke conspiracy theories. Um, so there are profound long-term effects for children. Having this on all day, and the lady behind me said about muzzling our dog for, for, for seven hours. I mean, children are the only ones right now in society that are forced to wear masks for six to eight hours a day, every day. They're the only ones. You know, if you have a job that does it, uh, you may, you know, wear it in, in, you know, in spurts when you're around people. Uh, you know, you can go outside, you can, you can take breaks. You know, they're stuck with it all day and, and somebody made, people, a couple, a couple people made comments about eating as if it, there's another option to eat without your mask on. I mean, I don't know how that would happen anyway. Um, anyway, that's, that's the craziness that we've gotten into as a society right now. Um, first off, uh, you know, if anyone knows anything about viruses here, again, I'm not a doctor, but they will never end. It will never end. Do we have a cure for the common cold? No. Do we have a cure for the flu? No. And I'm not equating it with either of those. The only thing I'm equating, because people somehow now get irate when you compare it to the flu. They are both coronaviruses and they have variants. When you get, I, I, I'm vaccinated, is my choice. Uh, I get the flu shot every year and I speak with a lot of people that are vehemently against the flu shot, like they think it's gonna give it to them. And if they don't wanna get it, they don't wanna get it. But you can still get the flu when you get the flu shot because it only protects against the two most prevalent variants in the southern hemisphere because they get it before us. So, this is gonna be the same thing for this virus. It's never going to end. It's Delta now. It's gonna go all the way through the, the Greek alphabet. Then you were gonna have two letters. As soon as you run out of the Greek alphabet the first time. So, this will never end. We cannot, I have three children under the age of ten in Bar, who's gonna be in Bar this year, Highview, and I have a five-year-old going into kindergarten in Highview. I do not want them because it's not gonna end this year. And that's what everyone needs to understand. We, you know, I understand people are worried, you know, and that's fine for them. If you're not worried, everyone should have the option and the choice. It's our children. We raise them. The school doesn't. So, we need to, the, the school needs to, if this goes into next year, I mean, you see what's happening between parents now on different factions on either side. This cannot continue. We, you know, it, it has to get to the point where, and the schools need to petition to the state and the municipalities that give them their, their, well, quote-unquote guidance, that when they get sick, stay home like you used to. You cannot force, you know, again, I spoke last time and I was irate about it because we took a twenty-five percent household pay cut because my wife had to stay home with the children. And I arranged my two days off because I could do it during the week so that I could fill in the other days. Uh, it was misery, as pretty much every parent knows, having to, to do that. You know, I'm not a teacher. I don't claim to be one. But we, we have to come to an end of this. You know, you all have to think about, what are the metrics going to be to get out of this? What, we, we, we can't, just can't just be this arbitrary feelings that, oh, you know, everyone's concerned. Oh, there's Delta now. Oh, it's more contagious. They, it's, you know, the amount of cases is really probably not that big of a deal as compared to the cases of the flu before coronavirus existed. It's just that no one, unless they, you know, got seriously ill and had underlying conditions with the flu and had to go to the hospital, reported their numbers. I've had the flu multiple times in my life. I never reported the numbers. It, it never added to that. Now, I'll finish up very quickly. It, as far as the CDC guidance goes, you're following, and again, it is guidance, they flip-flop, they go back and forth. Their guidance, they're now, on one of the most recent things, is going against the Supreme Court because President Biden couldn't even do it himself. So, that's how, that's how grounded in logic they are about the moratorium on rent. And people now are not gonna have to pay their rent. And this has nothing to do with, with, with schools here, but it's just a, an example of why, it's just guidance. And, and then they, they're talking out of you all know what, half the time now. And it's a political, you know, it's part of the political machine now. Um, so, the last thing I wanna say is, the most important thing that I feel about this whole thing with our children, I've, my five-year-old and my eight-year-old are not exactly speaking properly. And you all, as educators, know, it, it is insanely important for children to see the teacher's face and other children, to learn how to talk, to learn how to enunciate the words. They can't do it if we all have these damn masks on every day. It, it, it has to end. And it certainly doesn't look like it's gonna, you know, end this year. And I do appreciate the school probably being the best in the county as far as the limited amount of closures last year. So, I do appreciate that because if this keeps happening, you know, I am soon going to be a single, you know, parent, my, 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 we're getting divorced. So, we're not gonna have the ability to do what we did before. So, if we get quarantined, if our child gets sick, that's fine. That's on us. You know, we have to deal with it just like, we've always dealt with it for generations and generations. You deal with it. But if it's not our child who's sick and they are forced to stay home, we will not be able to do that. Me and their mother have jobs where you have to be there. I can't do a Zoom call in my underwear, you know, with everybody else and, and, and get paid more money and not have to pay, not have to pay for tolls, gas, parking. That, that's why people don't want it to end and they're not that upset by it. So, anyway, my, my child, especially my five-year-old, needs to learn how to speak properly. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jamie Girardin. I'm a parent to a fourth grader, a third grader, and my daughter will be attending UPK at Miller this fall. Um, I wanted to start by saying I'm proud to be part of the Nanuette School District. And I think you all did a fantastic job navigating COVID this past school year and keeping our kids safe. And I commend you on continuing to keep our children safe this school year. As a mother, or as any parent, we feel no one can keep our children safe the way we can. They're the safest when they're with us. But every year, we trust you guys. We send our children to you and we pray that you keep them safe the way that we would. God forbid there was a fire that you would safely and efficiently evacuate the buil, the building. You practice school drills on the bus in case there's an accident. And unfortunately, in these times, you have plans if there's a shooter in our buildings. And right before us, we have COVID. And we do have a plan and we have followed it all last year. And that's social distancing and cleaning our hands properly and teaching our children that and masking. And I know a lot of us are not gonna always agree, and that's okay. But one thing that we are all here for and that we do agree on is that our children need to be in school. This is where they need to be. The virtual learning did not work for so many families, including ours. My child struggled. He didn't wanna do his work. And this is where he needs to be to properly learn. But you can see it all over. If we do not follow through with the mask mandates, cases are springing up and hundreds of students and teachers will be sent into quarantine all over again and it defeats the purpose of what we truly want for our children. And I know many of you sit here and you think that the masks don't work, but I want you to think about this and you can ask your pediatricians, how many of your children came home last year with RSV, the flu, strep throat, or even a cold? My kids will have strep three times over. Not one case last year, and you can ask their pediatricians because I guarantee you, they said cases were at all-time low because masks did their job. And so did cleaning their hands properly and social distancing. I don't stand here and say that I love that I have to mask my children. But it's not about me and my children understand that. It is about protecting everyone else around us. And I'll leave you with this. I stand here tonight passionate about it because it is personal to me. Two weeks into lockdown of 2020, my husband, who is an essential worker, he is a firefighter. He brought COVID into our home. And I get really emotional about it because I didn't know anybody at the time who had it. I was terrified. My husband was extremely ill in the basement for over three weeks. I was the sole caregiver for my children. And if I got sick, the worst feeling you could ever feel is who is gonna take care of my children if I can't do it? If my husband is sick, if I am sick, what will happen to my children? And that is terrifying. Unfortunately, five days after my husband tested positive, two of my children tested positive. They had contracted it before he had shown any symptoms. My then-two-year-old and my six-year-old. My six-year-old was quarantined in his room. And as a parent, not being able to properly take care of your child because I needed to protect myself and my older child, I had to mask and glove when I went into his room to give him his medicine, to bring him his food, to take his temperature. I hooked a baby monitor up so that I could make sure that I could hear him breathing in the night. And I am telling you, as a parent, that is terrifying. And I do not wanna repeat that. And I don't want that for any of you, regardless of what your beliefs are. And if COVID has not touched your home, you thank God every day because it is not, it's not something you want. And you know what? It's the luck of the draw. You don't know what you're gonna get, especially with this new variant. You might be fine. My best friend is an ER nurse in West Palm Beach. She tells me what is going on down there. They declared a state of emergency today. They have no more ICU beds. They are not accepting children. The children are being flown to Orlando and Miami away from their families because there is no place for these children. And I don't have to stand here and give you the statistics. You can see them. You can see what's going on. The hospitals for the children are going up. The cases are going up and children are dying. And I will be damned if one of my children become a statistic. So, I'm asking all of you to do the right thing. Protect your children, protect my children, and wear your mask. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Listen, we, we appre- Still on it. Go ahead.
Bob Allen. My question is, we, we all appreciate what you're doing and we all have different, different opinions. Even the scientists don't agree on this stuff. And we certainly don't wanna see anybody becoming ill. And we, really, our heart goes out to everybody that has in the past contracted this illness. But we're, those, that was last year. A lot of people have been vaccinated. It's a lot different now. Not as many people are getting sick. It's not the death wish that it was before. So, one of my questions regarding the masks, and I just wanna get clarity for myself. I believe you said outside, they don't wear them? Is that, is that correct? And, and thank you for that. I really am happy about that. The other thing I have, have you considered or will you consider kind of a hybrid arrangement to make everybody happy? Because obviously, a lot of people have different opinions here. What about, I mean, most of the people are gonna be most vulnerable, as you discussed, riding buses, transitioning in the hallways. Why can't they wear a mask under those conditions, transitioning from one classroom to another? Once they sit down in the classroom, where they're there for whatever, thirty-five, forty minutes for each classroom, they're three feet apart, I think is what you were saying. Have them remove their mask. So, this way, they can see each other's faces, they can learn, they can see. I'm sitting here tonight looking at this entire board and half the time, I don't even know who's speaking. I mean, you guys at least raised your hand or something. So, and, and this is how the kids are gonna see. They can't-
Thank you.
-read any facial expressions. I mean, all I see is eyeballs. So, our kids are really, really suffering and that, that bothers me deeply. And we don't want them to get sick. So, my recommendation is, or my plea, that you try to consider an option where perhaps they would wear it while transitioning from room to room or when they're in very close proximity. Once they're sitting at their desk, they're not jumping up and down. They're sitting at the desk. They're listening, they're writing, you know, they, they, that should be acceptable, in my opinion. And I think it was something, you know, you guys should give thought. And it would satisfy a lot of the parents here. I think we, most of us might go along with something like that. And give it a shot. And if you start seeing that there's a problem with that, you know, early in the year, people are having some issues, then go to an all-mask issue at that point. But why not start the year off, try to commit, keep the community happy and also mitigate the illness? And as soon as you start seeing that that doesn't work, then go into an all-mask situation. And I think a lot of people here would probably accept that. And you'd be doing our kids a far better justice. And I really didn't come to speak about that. But that's my recommendation. I like to try to solve problems. And, and this is the only way. It's kind of a compromise. That's the way, it's not one way or the other. We're over here, a lot of people want, I want it this way, they want it that way, you want it this way. Let's come together with a compromise and try something like that. See if it works. If it doesn't, then we'll go back and do the other, right? I wish you would consider something like that. Now, the other thing that I really wanted to speak about briefly, or was really not speak about, but a question, CRT. And in the beginning, and it, it was mentioned a few times, you said, "You're not teaching CRT." And that other woman that came up, I wanna make sure that I understand. When you say "teaching CRT," I mean, it could be under a lot of different names. You're not embracing that? Is that an accurate statement? But what do you mean exactly when you're not teaching it? Is it gonna be weaved in with other instructions like history?
Sorry, hold on. The critical race theory curriculum, we have not adopted in Nanuette. Um, do we have a global perspective on teaching kids to live in a global world? Yes, it's part of our mission. Our mission is to prepare children for a, a changing global world. So, yes, we talk about multiculturalism, but I know what folks are triggered on based on their knowledge of the critical race theory. And, and I, and I understand, um, you know, from hearing the protests, that is not what Nanuette has not adopted the critical race theory curriculum at all.
But it's still CRT to a degree.
That's, that's not true.
To my sound.
No. Critical, critical race theory is, is an explicit curriculum.
Well, it is a curriculum, but what I was saying, I agree with that. But what I was saying during your normal instructions, whether- What I was saying during your normal instructions, whether it be history or something, I'll say history, for example, you could be weaving that into the history. And I, I think I may have heard you say
No, sir.
No?
No.
I'm pretty sure that's what I thought. So now, are you saying you're not embracing, you're, as of this year, you're not teaching it or when, ever?
Right now.
Right now?
Right now, we are not. To answer your question, we are not weaving critical race theory into our curriculum.
As of August 17th?
As of the beginning of this school year. That's all I can speak to.
September 12th. But you could be doing it later on during the year, it sounds like.
That's, that is not the plan.
Pardon me?
That is not the plan, no, sir.
All right, well, I thank you for your time and I wish you would consider that suggestion.
Thank you.
I'm all for compromise, but I want to respond to what he just said about let's wait and see and then if issues arise and, you know, compromise. The problem is that if issues arise, it is people's lives being compromised and the lives of all of the kids around them. So we can't wait and see because if there are problems, then it's too late. COVID has already affected the family. There is a woman from the Family Resource Center, Kathy Gregory, and teacher Gina Gregory, plus her husband and her father. It's already
Please don't mention it. Don't bring up names.
They're already losing people who have died of COVID. It's enough is enough. We don't need anymore.
Hi, my name is Lori Mahoney. This was my first year in the Nanuette School District. My daughter was in first grade. She'll be going into second grade in Miller. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but the gentleman that just went brought up the fact that it should be thought about to have the kids take their masks off at their desk. I asked for that last year and I asked for that because the temperatures went up to over 90 degrees by the end of the school year. And I found out that my daughter's room did not have air conditioning. It's illogical to think that a child, a six-year-old child, should have worn a mask in 90-plus degrees temperatures in a room where she was at the time, sitting behind three walls of plexiglass, and she was at the time being taught by her staff that had all been offered the vaccine by that point. My daughter had more of a chance of getting sick wearing a mask in 90 degrees in a classroom without air conditioning than she did catching COVID. So I just implore you all to please use logic and not just follow what the teachers' unions are telling you. Please use logic going forward. I don't know if she's going to have air conditioning this year or not. But what I'm taking away from this meeting tonight is send out surveys to the taxpayers. Because I'm hearing a lot of people that feel like I feel. So instead of making decisions behind closed doors for us, send out surveys to us. And I just want to say to the person that said that kids had a great time and they don't complain about masks, they don't for the most part, you're right, because they don't know that they can. My daughter never complained. I put two and two together when she started coming home with headaches. She also never told me that she scratched her arm on the plexiglass because she's just not that kid who's going to come home and tell me these things. Most kids don't complain because they don't think they can in school. They're following the rules and doing what they're supposed to do. But it is bothering them and you are taking away their childhood. But I'm just imploring you to please use common sense going forward, especially in situations like heat waves, and send out surveys. Send out surveys and feel, feel the temperature of the taxpayers because we should have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. No other public comments? Okay, next on the agenda is unfinished business. Anybody with unfinished business?
Okay, sorry. Um, I just had, I just wanted to say that last year, the board agreed to put air purifiers in all of the classrooms. So I just wanted to make sure that we are looking at those filters in those air purifiers to make sure that that's, that they don't need to be replaced. I was also curious about any updates on our security vestibules. Have, I know I see some, something going on at Miller. Is that, um, is that, does that work on the security vestibule there?
In answer to the first question, the filters will be changed. We've got a couple more months on them and there's a light that goes on. But you're right, there is one in every classroom, a high-capacity one. And we bought the backup filters at the same time. What's going on at Miller is HVAC work to completely redo the heating this year. And we're looking in the future at air conditioning.
Right.
In terms of security vestibules, uh, those are going to be in the, in the bond if the board accepts it. Uh, the one at Miller was kind of done last year, but we'd, uh, we'd look to probably improve the Miller one a little bit more. But the high school one and the middle school one will be the biggest investment of, of money.
Okay, great. Uh, also, the summer program, uh, do we have an idea about how many kids actually took advantage of our summer enrichment programs?
So Mrs. Tini typically gives a board presentation at one of the upcoming board meetings. It'll probably be in September, early October. Um, I can get you an exact number, but it was a healthy number of kids.
Good, good. I, I saw the kids coming and going, so I was really excited to see that. Okay, thank you.
On to do business. First is Rockland County School Boards. Anybody, Christine, do you have any updates?
Um, the only thing is we had an executive board meeting last week and we just approved our calendar. So the first meeting is September 13th and I'll be reporting back at our meeting, which is September 14th.
Thank you, Christine. Um, New York State School Boards, Nationals?
Uh, yeah, I've had a busy last two weeks on congressional meetings. Um, I met with Senator Gillibrand's staff to talk about certain points that are really important to us. So I'll just want to go over a couple of those things. First of all, we thanked them for the dollars that they sent to us. Had a very long conversation about IDEA. For those who are in the audience listening, it's the Individual Disability Education Act. Now, it's been instituted for about 45 years. And 45 years ago, when the federal government instituted it, they said, you will do this and we will pay 40% of the tab. Well, it's 45 years later and nationwide it's about 13%, but in Rockland County, it's around nine or 10%. So we're not certainly getting anywhere near the 40%. So my lobbying to Senator Gillibrand was all about making sure that I know they can't do it in one year because we're talking about probably 20, you know, billion dollars just to get it, it up to speed. We're getting 2.6 billion this year, which is more than we've gotten any other year, but we're still nowhere near where we have to be. Um, her office was certainly very appreciative of the IDEA conversation. They are in agreement with us and there is a plan to do it over, they're trying to do it over 10 years, but I asked her, could she please try to do it over five years? Because every time they do one over 10 years, we don't get anything. So we will see what happens with that. Second conversation I had with them was on their infrastructure plan. As you know, the school districts were taken out of the big infrastructure plan, but there is another plan going through that will just deal with schools. And so we, we had this conversation tonight. One of the things we talked about was the necessity for HVAC, for air conditioning in buildings, for air purifiers. We talked a lot about the green buses to go with, because I know we're looking into the electric buses, but they're very expensive. They're about three or four times the cost of a regular bus. So we're asking for money so that we can buy those electric buses. And also talk about changing the lighting to LED lighting, which saves us money and is veteran for the environment in the long run. Um, I talked about the fact that we had to spend between $2.5 and $3 million to get the air purifiers, to get the HVAC systems up to speed, to make sure that our classrooms had the things necessary so that we could bring our children and our staff back in, in a, in a safe environment. Uh, the next thing, we talked a little bit about digital divide. Um, I was on with about 15 people from New York State. So the digital divide conversation was mostly about upstate where there were lots of kids who did not have access to internet. Um, so there was lots of hotspots that they had to send out there. The biggest one for me and for all of you sitting out there and all of you listening is the fact that the SALT deduction, which was enacted a couple of years back, which has a $10,000 cap. Now, the average taxpayer besides the Nanuette School District taxes, but your town, et cetera, taxes is about $20,000 a year and the cap is 10. So all those deductions, we used to be able to take off. That stopped a couple of years ago. We're asking that that be changed. And I got a very positive response from that. As a matter of fact, there is a bill right now in the Senate. Um, it's called Bill 85. And there is one in the House, which is HR 613. That one's sponsored by SWOT. And I'll talk about Congressman Jones in a minute because I also talked with him um, this week about these same issues. I did talk about, they need to support public schools. And to me, you know, the way out of poverty is through education and I'm a prime example of that. So it was really important for me to them, for them to know that for all of our students, we have to make sure that they have an opportunity for a great education. And it has to happen in our public schools. And they were all very, very much interested in that as well. And today, I met with Congressman Jones, same topics. Um, told him about the bill that's going right now in HR 613. Uh, he's very much interested in making sure we do get our SALT deduction back. So he will be making sure he gets onto that bill, which is great uh, because that's really important for us. It's also to get funding for our special needs kids. Uh, because if we only get 9% and they said they were going to give us 40%, it would be a relief to the taxpayers if we could get that money. So everybody out there, write to Congressman Jones, write to Senator Gillibrand, write to Senator Schumer, tell them that you need the dollars for IDEA. Tell them that you need the SALT deduction gone. We need it eliminated. And we need the money in infrastructure plan so that school districts can put money into things that they can't afford to do themselves. So it was a really busy week, but I think it was a, a healthy week. And I'm really glad that, that I had the opportunity to do that. On the New York State level, um, I don't know who signed up to go to convention. But if you're going to do it, you have to call Annie and, and sign up. But there is going to be a law conference the day before, that's Sunday. I will pass this around if nobody has received it. I don't know if you all received this in the mail. Um, and the other thing is for, for Christine and for Ed, the Board Officers Academy, here's the brochure for that. I don't know if you, I know you said you were going to sign up for it, but if you want this brochure to take a look at. Oh, you did sign up? Great. Okay, and I know Stephanie went to the training for New York School Board members this past couple of weeks, which is great. We in Nanuette, when you run for the board, it's really important that you learn what it means to be a board member. So you go for, you go for a two-day training, one day on fiscal matters and the other day on academic matters. So, um, thank you for doing that and going for that meeting. And that's all I have on lobbying, et cetera.
All right, thank you, Annie. Anybody have anything for local government? Okay, next up is adjournment of meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Moved by Adrian, seconded by Stephanie. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved.